We're going to call the order of the Daniel Dune Area School District Board Voting Meeting. It's Monday, February 25th at 7:35 PM. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of the British Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mr. Scott. Ms. Olbrich?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Dursen?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Biscott? Mr. Wolf here. Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Jaisa?
Here.
A.D. President.
All right. There are procedures for public participation in the front cover of your agenda. If you'd like to address the board, simply come up to the podium and state your name and address and sign in, and you'll have three minutes to address the board with any of your concerns. We do have one current agenda edit in Item 9 Personnel, C for A/B. And there's an attachment that was provided to review this. I think we're all familiar with what this is regarding the assistant lacrosse and tennis, or I'm sorry, the boys and girls lacrosse coaches.
There's no B, so we made this agenda edit in 9B?
Yes, you are correct. And it would be Item 4, A/B. All right. And then I know there are several board members that have other agenda edits. If you want, Mr. Dursen, I'll let you start.
Yes, I would have two. The reason they are, we did have the cancelled meeting and these are some of the time sensitive repairs that need to be made, and I'll discuss them when the time comes up. One would be doing some door replacements here in the River Rock wing to continue to make our school safer. And the other would be a repair to the high school bleachers that has to get done shortly because there's some damage there, so we need to get that voted on tonight as well. These are both time sensitive to get done.
All right. Mr. Wolf, where would we put those?
12B and C.
All right, so 12B?
Under new business.
And C, under new business. And we have what, bleacher repair?
We have bleacher repair and River Rock door replacements.
The River Rock door replacements is 12B.
Okay. So that one's first?
Yes.
Sorry. So 12B is the River Rock door replacement, 12C is the bleacher stadium bleacher repair. And Mr. Miller, I believe you had an edit as well?
Yeah, I had to do from the extra committee meeting. We had an offer to Inspector Vonnell to donate $12,000. $8,000 of it was to be used for resurfacing the high school gym floor, so we'll have to run through the rest of that. $3,000 for booster club and $1,000 scholarship.
All right.
How are we going to list that on that? What's the motion?
I guess the motion is to accept?
The $12,000.
The $12,000 donation as itemized.
How much does it cost to resurface the floor?
$28,000 is the estimate.
Would that be an addition under 7, I guess L? Is that correct?
Well, this is, it's a new business.
Okay. So 12B?
12B.
Okay. Was that floor going to be done anyway?
It definitely needs to be done. Actually, we had complaints about some door lines not being regulation and issues with the floor. It's been sometimes.
All right, well, we can discuss it in detail once we get to it, but so that's the, is it X Factor, did you say?
X Factor, yeah.
X Factor Gym Resurfacing, and then it's also?
$3,000 for booster club and $1,000 scholarship.
$3,000 to boosters, $8,000 for floor, and $1,000 scholarship. And I guess you'll have some details on the scholarship when we get there? Okay. Any other edits by board members?
Since we did not have a committee for whole, are we going to have a, basically, commit a whole first and then go back in, then roll back over to voting, or are we going to try and go through it, see if you have consent?
I mean, Mike, I don't know what, if there's any required procedures on that, I just thought we'd go through it item by item and have any discussion kind of how?
I'm curious if, yeah, we're going to have our?
My plan was to just go through it like a committee of the whole and then vote after each. If there's any items in the consent agenda that we want to pull out as separate items, we can vote for them separately, I assume? Is that correct, Mr. Subers? If there's anything that's?
Are we going to insert a clause for public comment before we do?
Yeah, we would have to.
Yeah, so I mean, you can move each item individually, have your discussion vote on it, or you can ask under 7 whether or not there are any other board member votes or not, and then just?
What's your recommendation?
I think since you didn't have your count, maybe I would move each other, move each item individually, have your board?
So go through the whole consent list and then?
Vote as you move.
Oh, okay, all right.
Make a motion if anyone wants to talk about something.
Just usually the consent goes at one shot.
Yeah, because you had that discussion, but since we're going to be discussing, you should have on your file.
All right, so we'll move through the consent items, discuss them, and then at the end, we'll have the consent vote.
Are we also going to have committee reports as we, obviously, did not have that already?
Yeah, I guess we would need to do that. Where would we insert that? In?
For old business?
In old business?
Item 5.
It's actually a separate.
Okay, just put it at the end.
So we'll insert it. So Agenda Edit will, 13 will become committee reports.
I'll also have a report in the BCIU as well, so.
And then 14 will become presentations by public, although they will also have opportunity to speak after each section of the agenda, and then 15 would be adjournment. Any concerns with those changes? Any other edits by board members? All right, so I'm going to have to ask for forgiveness now for when I botched the order. I asked you to keep me on track here, quite a few changes. There will be an executive session following today's meeting to discuss negotiation issues. Are there any presentations by public on any of the current agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll start with the consent agenda items. Any of the board members have questions, concerns regarding any of Item 7? Anything under Item 7?
Make a motion for 7A through 7K.
So, no discussion on 7?
Well, we've got a couple of items.
All right.
Was there a second on the motion that you can have a discussion? Unless you want to consult it off of that?
Well, I'll second the motion, so we can discuss it. The question I have is that what we were just talking about, the independent vote for BCIU, that's on the consent, so?
I would remove that and have a separate vote on that one.
Okay. All right, we're moving E.
Correct.
All right, so you want to amend your motion?
I'll find what the revision to the motion.
Mr. Dursen, is that okay with you?
Yes, it is.
All right, so we're, consent items, 7E is being pulled out for a separate vote, everything else under consent. Is there any other discussion on those items?
Well, I know Mrs. Sands would be disappointed if I had to ask a question about the additional Skyward package, so I feel like I might be able to have to. What is, so what are we getting with this bid package piece here?
Okay, bid management is done right now currently with spreadsheet, spreadsheet. We have one secretary here who delivers a spreadsheet across the buildings to the other secretaries, who then update that spreadsheet and then send it back, and then all those POs are then entered into the system manually, so it's a very manual process right now. Right, if we get this automated paperwork, then what happens is the bid gets entered into the system automatically, and then once they have the schools, they just go in and take and tie what they want, and then the requisitions are automatically?
Yeah, I was trying to, that was not my perception of the bid piece. I was confused as to what does that leave us? I'm thinking, I'm thinking, is this, did we go out and bid on something? This is, okay, so this is?
The normal, the office bids, like the nurse supplies, the regular general supplies, the bid process that we do, you include those.
Okay. So this is actually the actual individual locations, they'll request how many of each item they want, and it happens that for us then to go out the bid on all these items?
Yes, for office supplies, nurse supplies, general bids that we want, we do want an annual bid.
Okay, and then that's certainly cut out between all the supplies that we deliver, it can be a little bit intensive. Makes some more sense than I think.
Does it do inventory management?
It does, but I've never looked at it. I do that, yeah. Now, it's also included.
So what's going to be, obviously, there's an annual renewal piece to this, right?
Yes. The annual renewal, as it is the $3,000 piece of the contract.
Then how much does this want to add to that?
The annual renewal is just $3,000.
For this package? So it's $5,000?
That's included in that. The $5,000 is the first year because we're going to do the evaluation.
Right, so $3,000.
$3,000 included. Just as a side note, since I have my mind in front of me, the Skyward reports are starting to be generated in the financial reports, so if you're seeing something you don't like, let me know. I hope anyone has a chance to look at that, the entire financial package.
Nice.
How will we know if it's Skyward versus what we had before? Will it have like an S with a triangle or red and blue?
Yes, yes, it can actually.
No, I mean, you'll be able to see a format difference.
You'll be able to see the difference. When you look at those reports, they look different than what yours do.
Okay.
So, but they give the same information. Just that presented.
All right. Any other discussion on any consent items number 7 outside of E?
Public comment.
Any public, I'm going to ask on the board if there's any more. Is there any more comments on items under 7? Any public comment under, anything under Item 7? All right, seeing none.
Item 7A through 7K minus 7E will be adopted unless I hear a motion contrary. Hearing none, motion 7A to 7K minus 7E is hereby adopted. I'll just thank the anonymous donor, it's several years in a row now that we've gotten that money, so that's, that's very.
So do we have, there's a motion for Item 7E?
There's actually going to be two motions for 7E. One, I'm going to ask, just let it get sent, you know, say aye, agree to it, and then that'll be one vote. Come back again, we'll do an individual voice vote, roll call. So it'll be two votes.
The IU requests that because it requires to pass a budget via the majority of participating school districts. We would vote, then a majority of the pushing vote of the individual board members, they request the two votes.
But I only need one, one motion, one second for both votes?
I would just call the approval, yeah, one motion, one vote, then two.
Two votes. Right, okay.
All right, so do we?
Motion for 7E.
Second. Just if anybody wonders, I'll call your attention to page 8 of your handout in the green booklet. You'll see a word number four, our cost of the IU this year, just for the, you know, services that there are, extra services that we pay for, but just the mandated services is $37,377.21, and obviously, you'll see that's a zero increase from last year's number. So, if you have any other questions on that, I can answer, but that's just the mandated services that you have.
All right, do we have any public comment on Item 7E? Seeing none.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, continue with the roll call, Mr. Dursen?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Biscott? I'm sorry. Mr. Wolf, yes? Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Ms. Olbrich?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Jaisa?
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight, one missing. The roll call vote declaring that the voice vote was unanimous also.
All right, we'll move on to personnel consent items.
Make a motion for 8A through 8D.
Second? Second by Mr. Strobel. All right, any board discussion on Items 8A through 8D?
Are we sure it won't be one 3A3 in there? Is that?
It's all right.
Is that person a third?
3A3?
Is that person a third?
Should we do a roll call vote on 3A?
Yes.
I'll be voting aye, if you support it.
Volunteers will vote? Be volunteers?
I mean, it could be a field trip, it could be they're helping with a project, reading. Sometimes they come, parents come in and read to the class. Any help?
Sometimes volunteers will come in and read down the hallway and do an activity.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, we just have unsupervised volunteers, let's put it this way. Volunteer.
It's always nice to have volunteers. It is. It uses a lot more.
All right. Any public comment on item, anything under 8A through 8D? Seeing none. Mr. Wolf?
Consent agenda items 8A through 8D will be considered adopted unless a hear motion contrary. Hearing none, consent agenda item 8A through 8D is adopted.
All right, we'll move on to item number 9 Programs. I think we'll break A and B out, so do we have a motion for 9A?
Second.
Second by Ms. Olson. And do we have a motion for 9B?
We'll stick to the first one.
All right. Any discussion on 9A? Any public comment on 9A? Seeing none. Mr. Wolf? All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's adopted. Eight, zero.
All right, do we have a motion for 9B? Mr. Dursen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rathke. All right, so there's a, if you guys, there's a handout that we have that explains the changes from, so this was our MOU to add two sports full-time, probably was a three. Swimming, tennis and lacrosse.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there were two assistant positions in lacrosse that we didn't account for. We had a total annual budget of $20,000. When we assigned the salaries for the MOU listed positions, we ended up just a little under that at, is that right, 18.5? Am I following along?
Yes.
Right, and then when you add in the two assistants, that adds in another cost of about $5,000, and therefore, we have an overage of the original budget in the MOU of about So I know we, do we have any concerns about either one, the changes to the MOU, because I think we're going to have to amend the MOU, I believe, is that correct?
We should amend it to refresh.
Yeah, so if we in fact adopt this, we'll have to amend the MOU to include those new positions. Are we good with, I guess first question is, are we good with the current items under the MOU that total are 18.5? That's our, so original stipends on the original group of coaches. I think the committee agreed that this was, this was good. Do we have?
We should go ahead and use the five brings.
Yeah. So, well, I mean, I guess the point is, we're not desiring to make any changes to that original set of, so we're good with that. So the question on the table is, are we comfortable with the adds of the two assistants that put us about $3,500 over the original budget?
Yes.
Any discussion, any concerns on the board? Okay, all right. What's, yeah, any public comment on the adding the new assistant coaches? Seeing none. Mr. Wolf?
All in favor of Plan B?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Which has to be here.
All right. Item 10 Personnel. Any board discussion on your personnel items A through C?
Well, you'll have to make a motion.
Motion, sorry, make a motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rathke?
Me.
Mr. Strobel?
Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Wolf?
Me.
You seconded it?
I seconded it.
Okay.
I'm B and I'm Mr. Wolf.
It's fine, if you want it to be the second, it's okay. You can have it. Any?
I'm the secretary, so I?
All right, well, you just second everything, we'll move this along. Any questions, any board discussion around Items 10A through C? All right, seeing none. Any public comments on Items 10A through C? Seeing none. Mr. Wolf?
Roll call.
Just a, all in favor?
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Which has to be here.
All right, we're still on track with the current agenda, so old business. Items 11A and B, we have a motion?
Two minutes.
Mr. Wolf? He's mixing it up. Second, do you have a second? Mr. Miller, on the board. All right, Items A and B, any board discussion? No? All right, any public comment on Items 11A and B? All right.
All those in favor of A and B, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Which has to be here.
All right, now. So we are on to new business, and we have several edits here, so we have Items 12A, B, C, and D. B, C, and D being edits, new items. Do we have a motion for Item 12A through D, or is there anyone that wants to break anything out?
Well, I would want to clarify the additional items B and C. I'm going to go in there specifically, a little bit specific.
Yeah, I get it. The River Rock Academy has the same style doors with the louvers on the bottom that we had in the whole, all the high school annex, which creates a safety issue for the students. And in order to keep all our students in the school district buildings safe, we needed to change out those doors. We did get three price, Casey did his legwork, and I appreciate that, got three prices. One price was $9,360, another price was $11,365, third price is $13,494.44, so I would like to make a motion to go with a low bid price of $9,360 to replace, I'm going to get this wrong, sorry.
Nine doors.
Nine doors, yeah. Nine wood door, plain slice, red oak, with timber glass to fit the existing frames.
Can I find the vendor?
And the vendor is the AG Moro Company.
Any board discussion on Item 12B?
And then with respect to 12C?
I could explain that, too. We had damage to our high school stadium bleachers on the student section side that caused the bleachers to become damaged and break and are unsafe in that section, so we need to get that repaired prior to the start of the spring sports season so that that section can be used during sporting events. And that amount.
Excuse me, Mr. Dursen, is that indoor or outdoor?
I'm sorry, the outdoor stadium. Yes, my apologies, the outdoor stadium. And the company is Southern Bleacher Company, this is under state contract, and that price is $12,456. I can read, if you guys want really detailed of what it is, entails. Does anyone want the full details? Okay.
If you're going to vote on 12, can you just make sure that we state that, just that you're accepting the donation from?
Inspector Vonnell. $8,000 is to be directed towards the resurfacing of the gym floor, which we're estimating $28,000 total. $3,000 going to the girls booster club, and $1,000 annual scholarship.
Is X Factor getting anything in return?
Well, they use our facilities, so they will be taking advantage of the floor, obviously, and they recently don't buy with 3C, so they may donate some funds.
Okay.
Was it on the schedule to resurface the floor before they made the donation?
I'm not so excited.
Well, I don't think this isn't an action to resurface the floors, this is accepting it for that purpose. And because we're accepting it for that purpose, we use it ultimately for that purpose.
But we don't, we're not required to, is there a time limit on when we have to use that?
I didn't understand, focus, Wolf.
No, the problem is the lines on the floor.
I'm not even saying that it doesn't have to be done. My point is, you can't just take a partial donation from someone because they have an agenda of what they want done that forces us to do it immediately. I don't, I haven't even been in the gym lately, I'm sure it does need to be done, I'm just saying, like, if that wasn't on our agenda, just because you're making a donation doesn't mean it's done now.
No, we don't have to do it now.
Well, Mr. Blackdollar, since you're reaching for your microphone, was there, what was the ultimate plan for when that would be scheduled to be resurfaced again?
Rule of thumb is gym floors can only be deep sanded three times before the floor has to be replaced. There's just not that much wood above the tongue on the groove part. It was already resurfaced once, for about seven to eight years ago, I was told, maybe nine years ago. The current issue is, in Enjazim, if you go in there, your Carolina blue color that's on the floor?
has turned a nice aqua brown color due to the floor finish. Um, Mr. Schmidt and I have talked about the gym floor a lot lately. Um, I actually have a contractor coming in, and, um, I believe it's Thursday or Friday, to look at the floor about trying to take the finish off. We were able to pop the finish off of the painted areas, and the paint's in perfect condition. So what we're hoping is, with some newer technologies, we may not have to take man, excuse me, the entire floor down, um, to a deep sanding, uh, is, is what our hope is. I've called around other school districts, they've been spending between 22 to 26, $27,000 to do a deep sand, repaint, and refinish, or slash, restain, instead of using paint. Uh, they stain the wood, so it lasts longer. So, um, we're kind of in the preliminary stages of sand costs and, and options with that. So, um, I have a flooring expert from Buckeye who makes the floor finish coming in. I think it's Thursday or Friday this week. Let's see if we can get the finish off of the paint without destroying the paint underneath. Uh, and that will save a substantial amount of money, and also save the wood floor as well, and give us some more life out of the floor. Uh, because I don't think you guys want to rip that floor out another 15, 20 years and go and re-sand it again, at that cost, so. Trying to see what our options are at this point in time.
So, to Mrs. Albright's point then, um, their expectation isn't that we're gonna immediately resurface the floor?
I'm, I'm not aware of what their expectation is, um, and just to clarify, uh, the, the X Factor, they previously were a different classification in our facility use, so they paid gym fees. And they are a actual true nonprofit through the state of PA. So, based on our school guidelines, they do not pay for gym usage, but they have already charged their, their participants fees based on, on their cost of, to rent, run the gym facilities. So they're turning around and, and returning that money back to the school district. Um, as a non, as a nonprofit, as a donation, it's already fees they've accrued and have collected from, from their, from their girls on the teams.
Okay, Kathy, how in skyward can we, if we accept this money now, how can we keep that on the radar so we know when time comes that we get the floor redone? That we already have some $8,000, uh, for donations aside of that?
It would be the same, I would classify it the same as I do with the turf. We have that specific fund set aside, just in a specific account for the fund, for that turf. We would do the same thing.
Okay.
And to Mr. Blackdollar's point, I want to make sure going forward, if we do take this money, because I know we've had some communications issues with this group as far as what they're doing and how they're using things and making money. And I want to make sure we're, we're clear going forward with this group, what they're doing and, and where, how they're raising money, and what's maybe not make sure it's all being done properly, and, uh, so I want to make sure this money's not being used as a leverage to be, you know, going forward or something like that.
Sorry, I would anticipate that. As far as where you're doing it in Florida, I think if you do it in the summertime, I'd say it would be the summer or delay it. It's my understanding it's not as opposed to that.
So just to be clear, we don't have any immediate on-the-book plans to resurface the gymnasium?
I do, I do not.
Okay. To everybody?
I wonder if we should accept the money then, right now?
You can, you can accept conditional gifts or donations, however you have to hold those funds subject to those conditions. It sounds like ultimately you're going to be spending these monies one way or the other on resurfacing this floor.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify, you don't have any intention of resurfacing, you're, you're not planning on rebuilding it? It just depends on how you define it. Resurfacing, or is it going to be the same condition as what this year or next?
This, this year is, we're due to, um, scratch coat and top coat, the floor. Um, that's not a re-surfacing, that's just, I can do the entire district for about $15,000. So it's just come in, they sand the top coats, so the new coat adheres, and makes it nice and shiny again. So, uh, it brings the tack back in the, in the floor finish. So, uh, a resurfacing, sand down to bare wood, relay all lines out, repaint, reborstain, uh, whichever option that we, we would go with, uh, so.
One possibility is for, uh, Mr. Blackdollar to review his investigation as to what the, the other options are. Table this, make sure that X Factor is understanding that what would be needed to use the funds.
Yeah, I think so, I, I don't know if they necessarily resurface, because we have to see the lines. We're gonna see if you can accomplish that.
In our, in our extracurricular meeting, they talked about the lines being an issue for various sports that participate, obviously one for being volleyball, and, uh, so I, I think that was just, I think, I don't know if resurfacing was the actual word, but $8,000 to redo the floor, so I, I think we just kind of threw that work in.
So if, so Casey then, the work you're planning to do would accomplish the repainting of the lines?
If, if we were, if we were to do a deep sanding, we would have to reestablish all lines, all logos and everything.
I'm saying, what, what you're scheduled to do-
What I'm hoping to be able to do is just bring the blue color back and the blue. I was, and I knew there were some line issues, so we could definitely use that money to get the lines reestablished and, and and get that part of it, you know, corrected for the various sports. Uh, there's so much tape and tape peels and stuff like that on the gym floor, I'm not sure what lines are, are the correct lines at this point in time, so. Um, you know, we could definitely accept the gift and, and, and the intent of getting the accurate lines painted on the floor prior to us recoding it if we cannot remove the finish down to the bare, down to the blue kind of thing. We need to recoat it this year, uh, to get the new finish on top, so. Uh, but we could definitely get the new painted lines underneath that new finish.
Alright, so-
And make sure it adheres.
Just to, just to restate, not a deep, the resurface.
Right.
Right? Take off the finish, see if we can rejuvenate the paint. If not, we could use some of these funds to reestablish good, clean lines
Correct.
for the various sport activities. Then, apply the polish and the finish coat, and we'd be good for, you know, foreseeable near future.
Correct.
So money allowed to be used if they can, if they don't need to re-
Well, it sounds like they were, their goal was, from what Steve said, is to get better lines so they could see them, so if we accomplish that, they're happy.
Painted or not, they could re-
And if there's money left over, then we can save that for when we do refinish. Right? Or, or to resurface again, right? As long as we earmark it for that purpose, we're good, right, Mr. Strobel?
Well, it seems like you're using that money. It sounds like you're going to use that $8,000 for the, for the project that you're describing. And, um, so long as X Factor, you know, then clarified that the money's being accepted for addressing the, uh, a line, you know, of the, the court, and-
So can we accept under the, with, with a-
I think with that clarification, I think Mr. Blackdollar identified that that was the intent, and, and we're, we're accepting it, so they can act clarified.
Okay.
Not, not to drag on anymore. Casey, can I just, I want to make sure I'm clear. Or you say one of the options is if, if we can't get down to that base paint, it's to leave the current paint, put new paint, and then a new, a new paint, a new paint for the, to get the lines corrected, and then a new, a new surface, we have two different colored paints, is that?
No, what, what, if we cannot remove the existing finish and get down to the Carolina blue color, I would leave that finish as is. We would then come in and sand the top layer, just with, uh, 2,000 gray or 1,000 gray.
Would we have, like, different colored paints in there?
Well, it wouldn't be a blue color, we would, it would, it would be another black or-
So it went a little totally red.
It would, it would be like your turf field where you have your soccer lines, your lacrosse lines, and so on and so forth. But that would be underneath the new finish.
Mr. Rathke? Mr. Rathke, any, anywhere? Questions about paint colors?
I'm dragging it out.
Alright. So we're gonna-
Right now you have a motion to approve A through D, as I understand it, and-
Do we have a major?
We have B and now.
Make the motion to approve 12A through D.
But we need to make a, a clause on the, the floor to say-
Well, I think, I think-
Pending, pending further, pending further clarification?
Well, no, I think we've, we've clarified-
We're good?
We're clarifying the basis upon our acceptance of the A, B, C, and D. But-
I think that's all part of the aim.
So we're good then?
Yes, but I think you might want to ask your-
Yeah, we, we do, so, any, any, any public comment on items 12A through D?
Can we get a second? Mr. Gerson made the motion, someone's-
Oh, I'm not sure. Mr. Strobel?
Sorry, Mr. Strobel, I missed that.
In all the, in all the excitement, we, we haven't, we just make sure we're clear that A is the approval of the new calendar.
Correct.
Is everybody good with the new calendar?
I have a follow-up question about the calendar. This year's, we didn't ask questions about graduation, but it's not related to this.
Okay. Any concern about the, just make sure we didn't really get, get to mention that? Everyone's good? Any public comment on 12A through D? Alright, seeing none, let's, uh... Roll call, do we?
Roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Albright?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Gerson?
Yes.
Mr. Strobel?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf, yes, and Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Ms. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Motion has to be here.
Alright, committee reports. Who would like to go first?
Well, mine's easy.
Alright.
Last month, I was not able to attend. Um, this, this Albright was similar, not able to attend, so neither of us made the, uh, the personal report for the, for the career technist, uh, tech-
Oh, 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 I was, okay.
Can I take the IU then?
Yeah, you might as well.
Okay. Uh, I actually have, I guess, actually for, for two, two meetings, so, um, first, um, uh, I actually, I did not send a picture to the board, but, um, I did send a picture to Mr. Smith tonight. Um, they have the new mark work up at the IU with all the districts. What is that, Ms. Brunz's first name, Julia, right? Yeah, Julia Brunz was our submission, very nice, uh, picture that she took of one of her friends. Um, one of the trails out, um, I think it's back by, uh, the park, big, uh, state, uh, state park there, so, very nice, um, good stuff. Um, and it's funny, I, I know, I know her dad, so it's kind of funny. And, um, also, Dr. Hackman actually received this year. She received the Berks County Chief of Police Award. Um, they gave Dr. Hackman that award for her continued commitment to, uh, frankly, I think we all know, she drives safety for all the districts with all the stuff that's been going on with the IU and them helping with everything as far as prices go and everything else, so really nice stuff Dr. Hackman does for all the all the districts, and that was a great award that she got. Uh, you might have seen in the paper, um, the PA Smart Advancing Grant, um, items, that was between the IU and, uh, Clifton. To take a little diving here, so, um, there were two, two levels of grants. Um, and I'm not sure frankly what, if we submitted a grant or not. Um, but there were, there was an initial, uh, a lower state grant that was given to, uh, pretty much everybody who applied, but I don't think we did. Uh, but there were like eight districts in the county that got, that got that grant. Um, what, what the other grant was for, uh, between Clifton and the IU, they partnered together and actually brought it to University of Pennsylvania. Uh, this was a definitely more restricted grant. Um, and frankly, the IU, I think, did a great job writing this grant and getting it approved. Uh, so, so what's gonna happen is now, um, the IU and Clifton are gonna be two centers, uh, for, for technology upgrades. Uh, they're gonna be bringing in equipment, um, that's gonna be available to all the districts. Um, and they're also gonna be facilitating what they're gonna call a, a master trainer. Uh, so their hope is to get one teacher from every district that, uh, University of Pennsylvania is gonna help train, uh, to become this, this master trainer that's going to be able to now help with some more STEM, uh, advance all the district STEM capabilities. Uh, so, it sounds very interesting, I'm kind of waiting to see where this goes. Uh, but certainly applications for, for going to improve its, its STEM capabilities. And it will be, again, it will be equipment available to all, all the districts as well, as the IU has some training that's gonna be provided here, so. In addition to that, um, the only other thing that, that I've kind of saw of interest that will, I'm not like sure where this is gonna go, if, if at all, but there's actually some bipartisan support now, um, for changing, possibly changing, um, cyber schools. Uh, you saw out there, uh, there's some, some push to, um, kind of reduce the costs that the cyber schools can charge the districts. Uh, one thing being floated that if, if your district offers a cyber school, um, then, um, the, uh, if, if a child goes outside of the district cyber school, uh, they're gonna basically cap, cap the, the amount that the cyber school can get at a very lower rate, basically equivalent to whatever the cost us to educate the child as opposed to this, this, um, kind of inflated. So what our cyber, cyber cost would be as opposed to what actually we're paying them now, which is probably half of of what we're, uh, what we're paying now for, for kids. Will, will it actually get it going anywhere? Again, this is the first time there's, there's actually cross-town support to make some changes, usually it's been this one party, uh, that's been pushing this. Um, but there's actually good Republican and Democrat support, so we might see something, maybe not quite what's being proposed, but, uh, I think anything really would, uh, would help bring some, keep some money in, in the district as opposed to paying what we're paying now for, for a cyber, so, so, we're gonna see that. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rathke. Um, legislative report?
Yes, uh, Governor Wolf did his proposed budget, I'll talk about the education portion. The governor's proposing a decrease of $200 million, which is 3.28% for basic education. Something that's broken down into ready-to-learn block grants, it's about 8 million. Special education is gonna see an increase of, in a proposed budget of 50 million, which is, uh, 4.4%. Career and technology, uh, would include a 10 million increase for career and technology. School safety is gonna get 45 million. Funding for people transportation is level funded at 549 million. School employees retirement, the budget provides for additional 116.5 million, or 6.54% increase to 2.6 billion to cover the state share of management costs. State assessment, funding for state and federal testing programs, including, including the key seven exams, PSA, PSA, sorry, receives a 1 million decrease. Teacher and professional development, the budget provides an increase of 650,000. Early childhood programs, early intervention, pre-K, will receive 15 million increase, again, proposed. Compulsory school age, takes a requirement from eight years to six years. They're gonna spend money to do a study on mandatory, uh, full-day kindergarten and lowering the age of five. And they're proposing raising the dropout age from 17 to 18, because, uh, in 2016, '17 school year, more than 4,017-year-old students left school before graduating. The budget plan proposes to raise Pennsylvania's minimum exit drop-out age for compulsory school attendance. Uh, that's currently 17 to 18. That's all I have.
Alright. Thanks, Mr. Gerson. Secretary report?
There's nothing, I don't see one.
Facilities? Mr. Gerson?
Facilities, uh, we met tonight, we had a lot on the agenda. We're wrapping up the RFP for- We're wrapping up the RFP for our grounds and cleaning services. That'll be coming fruition in March. We'll continue to work with the group about BEC masonry work to bring those costs down. We're continuing to work on a list for asset dispositions, like the old desks and things. High school fire alarm handles updated. We talked about the Rimmerach door replacements and the safety features already. There's an agreement with Berksboro American Legion and the school districts. The only cost they're asking for this year from the school district is estimated $3,000 to motive fields. The high school key, we had to rekey the doors, that is complete. There are some annex, gym doors are going to be retrofitted, we'll be adding some prices for that. Same thing with the high school gym door. Training project, the equipment has been ordered for the AC units, I don't know what it is, sorry. And that work is hopefully going to take place Thursday and Friday before Easter. Students are not at school, there could be some disruption. Mr. Blankenbauer will work with the high school administration to make sure any disruption will be minimal for the kids. We're looking at intermediate center replacing some playground equipment that's damaged. We're also looking at camera prices for the primary center. That's really it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gerson. Curriculum instruction?
Yes, Mr. Scott. Curriculum instruction of February 11th was canceled due to weather problems, and our next meeting is March 11th at 6:00. Can I, I also shared the policy today, so.
Sure.
So today's policy review meeting, that's normally shared by Buckey Scott, but he was absent. We had a dearth of attendance by board members, so we didn't really cover that much ground. Policy 335, family medical leave has come back, legal review, that'll go to first reading next meeting. Old business, there were two policies, policy 249 on bullying and cyberbullying, that'll come back from the administration with input from the building administrators and central office administration, and that will also go to the first reading. And policy 810.3, which is school vehicle drivers for the van, you know, driving students, less than 10 students, so not our transportation contract. And that will be going to a first legal review. And all the rest of the new business, we just left that for next time because we really couldn't have a wholesome discussion on it.
All right.
And that next meeting will be March 25th at 6:00. And March 28th is EIT earned in from tax meeting, and I'll be sending that as quarterly mail.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Olson. Transportation?
We did not meet last month. This month, we are meeting March 18th at 6:00 p.m.
All right. Extracurricular?
Technology first.
All right, go ahead, do technology.
I'll switch back. Okay. Yeah, excited for Mr. Struble, the technology committee, and talking about Skyward, the management piece that we needed to. We had a budget update, put out pricing requests, we're expecting 50% coverage on most of our equipment from the rates to get refunded by, except for middle school, which looking to reduce the amount of equipment that's saved for middle schools. I'd like to number shame down as much as. Looking to replace our communication provider, Waze Stream, we have a bunch of PRI telephones we need to replace that with some technology, which also should be cheaper. Website redesigned, looking to use Blackboard, which is actually slightly more expensive than the alternative, but provides better AD coverage. It's about $12,000 to get the bills, looking to spend about $6,000 this year during the $8,000 annual expense. Talked about one-on-one, it's going well. Planning on reissuing iPads for summer work with pre-k insurance. People are starting that, starting to talk about looking into middle school use, possible middle school about 2021. Digital document storage platform, the county's evaluating alternatives. Square 9 is our preferred alternative, $40,000 licensing, I'd like to refer implementation for that. The online payment system is going live early March, we use for AD exams and prom. Next meeting, Mr. Struble, will you lead in then?
March 10.
March 10.
All right, thank you. Extracurricular?
Extracurricular, we talked about the X Factor, they presented the presentation, and we talked about their offer. Talked about looking into reviewing some of our policies, going to take a deeper dive into some of our policies for athletic travel and public tournaments by other clubs. Got an update from the winter teams. Bowling and wrestling had very good years. Talked about discussing coaches, the JV coaches, assistant coaches, and what's the cost for that forward. Talked about activity fees, we want to consider looking into removing the second fee, it's a bit of a lab bull discussion, but we had potentially eliminated the second activity fee. We'll talk about that further, bring it forward. Also had some discussion on a need for a assistant manager, some assistant middle school program, and something that we're still also discussing and looking forward in the future. The last item was, I want to bring up, there's an agreement with our baseball coach, Martin signed an agreement that he was limited from coaching travel teams, something that wanted to have potential for this. Martin, he's the only person that's denied that restriction, we don't respect drug violations. Something we should talk about in the future.
There's a lot of history with that one.
I think it's a discussion we have in the near future. Someone, wasn't I, had a question they wanted to kind of discuss sooner than later?
I think it's okay for the high school, I think it's more for the travel season before. Sometimes. We don't need that discussion to happen, yes, discussion we should have.
I guess, well, you don't have to talk about it now. All right. All right. I think that's everything. Finance?
Yes, Mr. Scott, we did have a finance, we did a budget workshop, I'll call that, March 6th, I mean, February 6th here in this building finalized the look at the building level budgets. So what we're looking at now, we also discussed some of the, you know, plan, possible changes that we could do because we know we have some class sizes that are under our guidelines and what we could do with those individuals. So we're waiting for administrative recommendation on that. Going forward, it's, since we put forward our budget for public, generally speaking, what happens now is the only things that changes is personnel changes, retirements, shipping folks around fulfill all of our needs. And we're also waiting for Dr. Cooper to put forward his proposal for realigning the administration as he would like to see it. So unless anything pops up, finance will be coming out then, it rises to the level that we're sitting at. That's what we're down to until we get to our May timeframe. We have to actually, you know, vote to what our proposed preliminary budget is going to be advertised for 30 days, then the June would be when we actually adopt our final budget. So some discussions are going to have, probably be best at some point then, as we get closer into April, that we have some more inclusive discussions about finance, when these things start to kind of get up.
All right. And what's our next meeting?
Our next meeting would be the March 6th here at 6:15.
Any presentations by public on any of the agenda topics today? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, anything.
On any items? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn?
Second.